Evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the March 11th, 2024 School Board Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Stacy, could you please call the roll?
Maggie Smith.
Excused.
Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wench.
Here.
Crystal Lee.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Deja Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Need.
Here.
All right, with six of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published. Chris has moved?
Second.
That was Barb? A second to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. All right, moving on to the District Administrator's Report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I have a few announcements this evening. First, I would like to share that we, our high school students, will be presenting She Kills Monsters in the Fine Arts Center this upcoming weekend, so if you have time, it's going to be a fantastic show, and go support our students. You know, tickets are available at the door even. It's $5 for students, $10 for adults, so go and support them. Should be wonderful. Also, next week, on Wednesday, March 20th, from 6:00 to 7:00 at Holman Middle School, we're going to have an open house. And what the open house is for, it's before we start to do construction on our middle school, we want to make sure we celebrate parts of the building that will actually no longer exist there on the one end or wing of the building. So we invite the community to come in and walk the halls, and we're gonna, you know, bring some, we're working with the National Historical Society of Holman here to bring in some history and celebrate what we have had and what we will be getting over there at the middle school. Also like to congratulate, we had 31 Holman High School DECA members that competed this last month at the Wisconsin State Career Development Conference, and 19 of them were top finishers in their respective events, so that's great outing, and congratulations to them. And then, we have our Holman High School's Talented Skills USA team showcase their exceptional skills at the regional competition at UW Stout, excuse me. Resulted in 15 students advancing to the state Skills USA competition, so we wish them the best in Madison coming up on April 9th and 10th. And then lastly, we're, well, it doesn't feel like we're just wrapping up winter sports, but we are in that with the weather today. And we just want to congratulate our gymnast Katie Lang for her fantastic showing at the state competition on the uneven bars and floor exercise, and once again, just a remarkable performance by our wrestlers, the 10 wrestlers at the state. And then additionally, just congratulate, we had 12 power lifters that competed at the state meet this last weekend, so congratulations to all of our coaches and winter athletes and for all their competitions. And I know we have, like, show choir starting to finish up their season and so on, so thank you.
All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 8.1, Director of Transportation Dan Garrett will now present on school bus bids. This item will return to the consent agenda after the bids are received.
Hello. Dan Garrett, Director of Transportation. This year, we are looking at bus bids for the following school year, 2425. We, I wanted to bring this to the board because the prices have been going up on buses quite dramatically. Plus, we're looking at a different type of bus. Normally, we've been doing the regularly diesel bus that everybody's accustomed to with the big front end. We're looking at a snub-nose bus, which brings the dollar amount up a little bit, but it gives us better turn radius and another diesel engine. And we're looking at this bus because right now, we do a lot of them, coolie turnarounds, and with the better turn radius, we feel it's time to replace some of the ones that are starting to have service issues. So we were looking at approximately $142,000 for one 76-passenger bus. We have $160,000 from the referendum. So with the remainder, approximately $18,000, we're going to be looking at getting a used or a new van, depending on what we can find in the area. We have one van that did go out of service that we're looking at replacing. We'd like to do that the beginning of next school year as well. So that portion of it would go towards the purchase of a van. Any questions?
Any questions? No questions, thank you.
Everybody have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, moving on to item 8.2. I welcome summer school administrators Sue Eitlin, Ben Taschner, and Nick Baki to present the 2024 summer school plans. This item will appear on the April 8th consent agenda.
It wasn't working. There you go. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. As mentioned, I am Sue Eitlin for the elementary summer school program, and the others will follow. So we're going to get started right off with elementary summer school. We are having our program after the Fourth of July, so July 8th to the 25th, 14 half-days as in the past. And this year, we will be at Evergreen Elementary School. So our focus areas, as far as closing the gap, we have a math review and reading review, plus they might get a little bit of what they will be, the grade they're going into in those areas. We do have Ready, Set, Learn for our incoming kindergarten students, so they will learn about the expectations for kindergarten. We do group students by their schools as much as possible, so we're hoping that they'll rekindle some friendships and make new friends with the students that are going to be going to their elementary school. And the focus really is on pre-academic skills and the social-emotional learning, and we, of course, set up, we have play-based activities, and they are intentionally set up for the students to learn. As far as enrichment, our Ready, Set, Learn would have enrichment just integrated into their program. And then each grade level through fifth grade will have one enrichment class offered in addition to the reading and math, and those will be listed in an upcoming course book. The daily schedule is here. You can see, students would begin, or could begin arriving at 8:00. We really prefer that parents not drop them off too early because our staff does not, is not out for supervision until about 7:55, so 8:00 is a great time for students to be dropped off. And then, we will end up leaving at 11:55 from Evergreen to head over to middle school. You will notice that our classes are 8:30 to 11:50. There is a 20-minute break built into that, and so we ask students to bring the snack from home. We've been very blessed to have Holman's Hope providing some additional snacks for kids that maybe don't have an opportunity to bring something, so we always appreciate their support as well with that. As far as the changes since last summer, again, our location is changing. We want all students to have at least one opportunity during their elementary school years to be in their own school, so this year, it's Evergreen's turn. Our class sizes, we are going back to the school board guidelines for the recommendations for class sizes, and that's in an effort to get additional students to participate in summer school. And then, we used to send out lanyards. We did have a couple of incidents where it wasn't the safest thing for students to be wearing, so we're not going to do that this year. We instead are just going to have students line up by grade level, and we'll make sure that the teachers get them to the right places. There's plenty of us there to help out with that, so. And then, as far as registration, have its own slide there. There's a lot of information here. We are having parents register their students this year for their upcoming grade, so if they're in second grade, they're going to be now, they would register for third grade because that's what they'll be in in the future, or in the fall, I mean. And Ready, Set, Let's Learn, we ask that parents have an idea of which school their child will be attending, and if they are unsure, they could, of course, check with our district registrar, Courtney Wilson, to get that information. It's just helpful so we can group the students together at their elementary school they'll be going to for kindergarten. So we are having, the students who are recommended for summer school, we're opening up registration on April 2nd, so we will send out the link to the families of students who are recommended. I really can't emphasize enough, please get online immediately. The link will be sent out at 7:00. I recommend being on at 7:00 to get enrolled. It fills up extremely fast, so even though we have the second, third, and fourth, some of those people may end up on the waiting list. That's just what the trends show us. And then, we do ask families to please not sign up their siblings, so if one child was recommended and a sibling may not have been recommended, we ask that they only sign up the recommended child first on those dates. Of course, if people do not have access, or they have any problems at all with the registration, we ask that they please email myself or Kirsty McKnight, who is our summer school administrative assistant. And the numbers there, our contact information is there, we'll be happy to help anyone get registered. And then, everyone else, for any remaining possible openings in each grade level, can register April 9th to 11th. Again, completing the registration form does not mean that someone's in summer school. We have to, after everyone's got registered, then we go through and figure out how many spaces there are per grade level, and then we put students on a waiting list. If anything should happen to open up where someone that was registered could not attend, we go to the very first person on the waiting list in that grade level, and we notify the families and ask if they would still like that spot, and we do that throughout the summer up until summer school starts, so. Everything is on a first-come, first-served basis, so again, please register early. And I think that's it. Oh, we will notify you, though. Families will get notified on April 30th whether their child is in or if they're on the waiting list, so. The other last thing I just want to mention is, shout out to all staff in the district. We are still looking for about eight more teachers, so please consider teaching. It's really, you make a difference for the kids, and it's really special for them to see you in the summertime. They want to make those connections with staff as well, so. If you know of anybody that's interested, or you think somebody might be interested, please encourage them to get on our link and get signed up to teach, so. Thank you very much.
Ben Taschner, Holman Middle School Associate Principal, also run our middle school summer school, so I want to talk to you about that tonight. So we are keeping things pretty similar to last year, so as far in the scheduling, we have a snack breakfast. I would say the big shift is really kind of where we're going to have summer school in the building, so really kind of working through those logistics to keep students and staff as far from the construction as we can, so that we can have a seamless summer school. Really looking for those new ideas and shifting that summer school reputation, so really, as I've talked with teachers, we've kind of come up with some different inclusive and creating those equal opportunities for all students. And similar that, we do open up our summer school registration, and it's open for everyone, and again, it's on that first-come, first-served. But really, this year, as you kind of think about it, so last year, I rotated students through about four classes. This year, when I open it up, I'm going to have 10 classes that teachers have presented as we kind of open that up for students to be signed up. These on the left are just some of our options that we have there, like a science of sports. So for instance, I have a teacher that's got some connections at UWL where they're bringing in some students to work with our students here in the district to kind of work through, well, if I swing the bat this way, but if I change my steps a little bit this way, or change, position my shoulders, then I can really kind of dig into that. So really, kind of creating those engaging opportunities for kids. And so we have that for all of our middle school students, and then those students that fall within our mandatory grade level advancement that are going from eighth to ninth grade. I do work with those students and have been talking with them since the end of each term as we kind of move along, so that they're aware of what's coming, and try to then shift towards that skill development, community service, and that further career exploration. So kind of, again, made that shift within that class, really looking for career and college-ready, but just so that they are prepared and engaged as they step into high school. That's middle school.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mr. Baki, I'm one of the associate principals at the high school, and have been overseeing the summer school program with the high school for quite some time now. So we run two sessions at the high school. The first session is a credit-specific course. All the courses that we offer are specifically courses that we need, students needed to complete for graduation. We allow students and families to be able to register their students. We do not do a first-come, first-served at the high school. We collect all of the requests, and then from there, then, based upon whether or not student has one, two, or three requests, I kind of manipulate and move things around to try to be able to get every single kid a class. Is kind of my priority, and it's not always the case, but we certainly do a pretty, pretty close job of being able to fulfill that. As you can see, we did cross out, we did not have enough numbers this year, so we are not going to run a US3 class, which is our freshman-level social studies, but instead, we increased intersections of economics because we saw an increase of students wanting to take economics in the summer. All of those courses, except for the ones highlighted, are virtual, so government, personal finance, health, economics are all virtual-level courses. Oral communications is a blended course. They come in for their final speech, and then as well is the beginning, just to kind of set the stage for the summer. And then, Totally Fit Wellness, they do come in, those students are required to come in at least four days a week to actually perform the workouts and those types of things for the students because of the objectives of that course. One thing that you may or may not have heard about, but we kind of came across this year a little bit, is the Department of Instruction is starting to tighten up their requirements for summer school for students or families who are out of district, so open-enrolled families. So the legal expectations from the DPI is if a family is open-enrolled, they are not allowed to access a completely virtual course. So that was pre-COVID, and the DPI has loosened those regulations up during COVID because families were not able to, you know, get into spaces, and schools were shutting down, et cetera, and they've started to kind of come back and to tighten those types of expectations, so we did have to work with some different families. We initially were not allow, not able to really allow students to be able to take classes if they're virtual and open-enrolled, but we worked with families, and we kind of looked at some language with the help of Mrs. Edwards, and ultimately, we figured out that there is kind of a, there's an opportunity for them to still take virtual classes as long as they come in within the school district and access the courses. So we have went back to those open-enrolled families and said, if you are still interested and there's a space, we can get you in there, but you have to access the material and the course from within our school district boundaries. We've established the high school is obviously the home base for them to be able to come in, use the Wi-Fi, et cetera, but that is the language that the Department of Instruction has established that we need to comply with. And the long story short of that is, they simply don't want people from all over the state being able to access courses if you're not enrolled in those school districts with the way education has shifted. Second session will predominantly be the same as it has been in the past. Again, I've shared, we have shifted that over the past couple of years. That is a recovery class, recovery courses that are specific to our cores, so we have our four main cores. If a student does not pass during the academic year, but does meet within that threshold of roughly 50% or higher, but below passing, we automatically enroll those families and those students and help communicate them. We're trying to remove as many barriers as we can. We do provide transportation for those students to be able to come in, work with the staff, and the unique thing with that is that we have them simply work on the work that they did not meet proficiency on, so they come in, if they didn't, one unit they did not do very well, they come in, they can justify proficiency on that unit, and then they earn the credit and they can move on. They don't need to be there for the remaining 14X days that are there, so. This is going to be you. I don't know if there's any other questions. I'll answer them in a little bit.
We just wanted to alert you to some pretty significant changes that are coming up. Act 20 is a pretty comprehensive piece of legislation that Instructional Services Team is actually going to come and give you a bigger briefing on as we get deeper into the spring with all the other impacts that it has and the preparation work that we've done for it as it goes into effect next year. But one of the, one of the pieces of this legislation is that for students in particular grade levels, will be required to provide an intensive reading intervention for those students who have not met their personal reading plan goals, and that's another big piece that's outlined in the legislation as well. So that's going to be a different look than what we currently have in our program. And then also, previously, we have always come to you in the fall to kind of recap, this is what happened in the summer, and then at this time, to prep you for what's coming in the upcoming summer. We are going to condense that next year and have this team come to you late November, early December, give you the recap, and then also propose what we would like to do for the upcoming summer to give you a chance to preview that and get your approval on it before we get too deep into the planning stages. And then...
And then sometimes we have families who are curious about a couple of other options, and these are very specific to individual students. So the first one is English as a Second Language, our summer adventures program. This is for our multilingual learners, and so they are invited from grades K through four to come in, and they do, I think this year, it'll be two and a half weeks, we're trying to work around construction, transportation, so they'll work on a lot of the different vocabulary thematic units. And then our Extended School Year Services are for students with disabilities. That's criteria that is assessed at their individual education plan meetings, and typically, when a student is either learning a brand-new concept or significantly regresses over breaks. So those things are always discussed at a team meeting.
All right. And then I think it's, just any questions that you have for our team?
So can I get one question? So on the Act 20, you talked about either meeting or not meeting their personal reading goals, basically? So that is different than grade level?
Yes. Yeah.
And that gets defined for each student differently?
Yes and no. So as part of the act, one of the pieces in there is that any student who tests into the bottom quartile based on a screener will have a personalized reading plan, and so then you'll set goals within that plan, and then students who have not met that, then will have this most, more intensive summer reading program to help achieve those goals. So separate from an IEP, but actually, the components of it actually are fairly similar.
Right, because isn't there something written into Act 20 about retention? Or no, there's not it?
Well, okay, there has to be a policy around it, but it doesn't necessarily mean retention, so we have to have a promotion policy like we have in some of our other grade levels, but yeah, that hasn't been something we've visited.
Okay, all right.
There will be more coming from DPI on that with more guidance, but they're still unfolding some of those pieces, too.
All right, anybody else have questions?
I was wondering, I'm not for certain, do teachers have to be current teachers for, in the district now to do summer school, or do you take substitute teachers for?
Do you want to talk to how we, we've streamlined that application process, so I believe, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but we open it up district first. We've streamlined that process, but then we also open it up if we have a greater need to outside subs. We had, last year, we had, what, two or three staff from other districts? They ended up becoming hired and being hired here, which was pretty exciting, too, so.
So March 15th is the date to apply for elementary summer school teaching. That's kind of the deadline, so after that, if we don't have enough teachers, then we will be having that posted on "we can," so anyone outside the district uses "we can." And anybody is encouraged to apply, that's certified.
Great, thanks. All right, anybody else? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 8.3. Executive Director of Finance and Operations Julie Holman will now present the third-quarter budget revisions for consent on April 8th.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm bringing forward the revisions year-to-date, so any changes that have been made in our budget since the October annual meeting and budget hearing, and there's actually not very many, and I've spoken to them before, just not officially taken, had you take action on the third-quarter revisions. And so, what's been provided to you is the typical DPI summary format for the budget for all funds. And then, the piece that I'd like to draw your attention to more, just to talk about the changes, is pretty short. This is the notice of change that gets published after you take action, which won't happen now until the April meeting, since we just have the one meeting in March, and then we would post this in the La Crosse Tribune following that consent, but it just gives you the very brief summary of what has changed, and so I'm just going to speak about some highlights within the issue paper to talk about these numbers a little bit. You will notice that the notice of change is only general fund. That is because there has not been any changes made to the remaining funds, 10, 21, 27, 39, 42, 46, 50, or 80. And so you will notice on the original document that I just showed you that the second to last and last column are the same for those other funds. So the exception, again, is our largest operational fund, and that is the general fund, and I'm just going to highlight some changes. So the revised budget has a planned deficit of $1,156,220. This means that the general fund estimated expenditures exceed the general fund estimated revenues for the current fiscal year, 2023-24. This is a decrease of $749,000 from the deficit that was estimated last October. If you recall, the primary reason for this decrease is because we have been able to remove the referendum construction portion for HVAC projects at Viking and the middle school, and we'll be paying for those out of the construction fund, and that is because our middle school and Viking bids have come in under budget, and so we're going to shift the HVAC projects that were slated to use the balance of SRR3 money, the federal pandemic relief money that's expiring, and we're going to use part of that instead to pay for existing expenses in general fund, which helps preserve some of that fund balance for this year. So that's good news. We're preserving a little bit of it, so we've reduced our deficit from about 1.9 to 1.1 million in the current fiscal year. As a reminder, fund balance is not a sustainable source to support ongoing expenditures, and deficit spending will certainly deplete this going forward unless we are able to identify and generate additional revenue to help support those expenses. So in this document, the notice of change, you will see a net change, a decrease of revenue of just about $1,600, and that has to do with an adjustment in one of our state project grants, and then it goes down to a few different line items within the expenditure appropriations, a decrease in instruction, so that's going to be all of our 100-level expenditure codes. So if we start here on line 58 through 65, those are our subtotal instruction functions, small decrease on those. And then, the largest impact is this $743,000 decrease, and that's in our support services. So support services is all of the line 66 through 75, includes pupil services, instructional staff services, general administration, school building administration. That's where the business administration, which includes facilities, that's where you're going to see the biggest decrease from 9 million to 8 point, just under 8.2 million, and that's where that heating, ventilation, and air conditioning change, or removing it from the general fund budget, you'll see that decrease right there. We also, if you recall, approved new bleachers at the high school. That is the net change in our, that same line item under business administration. All facilities fall under that category as well. So just reminding you that we did increase to replace bleachers at the high school. We decreased to move HVAC expenses from general fund to Fund 42 construction, and again, that net change in expenditures is $751,000 decrease in the general fund. This, these changes for third-quarter revisions, if we go back up to the top of the summary format, you will see in the pink-red line here, line 7, the change in estimated fund balance for fiscal year end June 30th, and you will see where that decrease in expenditures predicts an increase in the fund balance, estimated at 16, just under 16.3 million for June 30th, 2024. Again, that is an estimate, and I typically bring fourth-quarter revisions to your attention as well as we get closer to the end of the year. $16,278,000 is about 28% fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures. The component that is reserved and committed would be 1 point, almost 1.2 million, that's our sinking fund and post-employment benefit reserves, and so the balance of that, which is assigned and unassigned, or lines 5 and 6 here on the end, that's about 26%. That is the goal. Again, if we continue to deficit spend, we will be, in the future forecast, would be drawing down on those reserves unless we have new revenue through state or local sources. reserves unless we have new revenue through state or local sources. So, I think that is it for updates on third-quarter revisions, and then this would come back for the consent at the first April meeting. Any questions?
Any questions? No questions. I just want to thank administration for all the hard work in putting together ways of reducing our deficit, and it's, it's evident.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials at each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Khadijah. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. So tonight, we'll start with Bridget.
Yeah. All I wanted to say was, thank you to those of you that have worked so hard to plan our summer school. I think it's just one more aspect of our school district that we can be really proud of. It's just always high-quality, and I love that we have waitlists for it. And I just think kudos to all of you for doing that hard work. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Bridget. Barb?
DEI committee did not meet tonight. We are waiting for district leaders to provide us with some more feedback. So we will plan on meeting again next month. I just wanted to say congratulations to our high school Quiz Bowl team for placing first at the Alaska Invitational.
All right. Thanks, Barb. And Crystal?
Well, I just want to mention that there is a Holman High School Pyramid Concert this Sunday, March 17th at 7:00 PM. So please go there to support them. I don't know if you guys have mentioned it before, but solo ensemble was from the past week, few weeks ago. We have a lot of state qualifiers. It's more than like 20-plus. Spring sports, it's on its way, like we've mentioned. Winter sports, it's like shying away, but we still have some things here and there. Regardless, I just want to say, as spring sports is making their way, and athletes are making their way to trials and such, I hope that we're very supportive of them. Parents, be supportive of your athletes. Regardless, let's just wish them good luck. She Kills Monsters, it will be performed by our theater students. They perform this Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and so on. So, let's also go and support them. $5 for a ticket. Pretty good. Triumph Honor Society is bringing up something of this month. So, did you guys know that March is actually the National Month of Music, basically? So, with that, our Triumph organization does things like celebrating staff and parents, or people who have been involved with music throughout their life, and we highlight that. We do a lot of things like Week of Music, which is 7:00 AM to 7:30 AM this week. Not saying you have to wake up that early to go, but if you are there, please support them. They work hard on this music and performing. Kudos to the Schools USA students. Great job. Forensics, they've also made it to state, I'm pretty sure. DECA has done great. And I want to bring up something. I would also bring it up, like maybe next month as well. But there is student representative. We have a primary, since we have more than four candidates. So I just want to say, we can hopefully all wish Danny A. Abigail-Holti, Jack Thompson, and Kevin Zuki, good luck for them running and being brave just to run for such a strong position. And lastly, prom. Students and parents, quick notice, prom is on April 13, 2024. Tickets are $20, and they're on GoFan. So, just, if you have any kids in the district, let them know, because prom is very, very soon. Regardless, that is a wrap on my words. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Crystal. All right, Khadijah?
Yeah. Talking about a student representative primary, I want to highlight our wonderful current student representative, Crystal. We, she is getting to the end of her high school career, and will be leaving our table soon. And I just want to say to you that you have been an incredible presence on this board. You always come with a lot of positivity. You're really great at supporting a huge range of all the things that students are doing in our district. So, it's been an honor working with you. And I, we all wish you the best in whatever comes next. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And that's all I got.
All right. Chris?
Very well said. Thank you. I just want to echo what Bridget said about thank you to the, the leaders who put together the presentation on summer school. It is a very great asset we have for our, our district. And then, we do have a policy meeting at 5 o'clock on the 18th. So, more updates coming for us to update.
Lindsay?
I just second what everybody else said. I really don't have any other further updates.
Okay. I'm just going to add that I look forward to walking through the halls of the old building at the middle school next week, and seeing that before it gets torn down. And that's all I have as well. Moving on to item 10.3, the board has been provided with notes from the November 27th Policy Committee meeting. Please take a look at those. Also, the board has been provided with 10 policies from the Policy Committee. Take a look at those. And if a board member has any questions regarding the policy, please reach out to Dr. Mueller prior to April 8th meeting, where the policies will appear on the consent agenda for approval. On our upcoming board meeting schedule, on March 18th, we have a Policy Committee meeting at 5:00 PM, followed by the Candidate Forum at 7:00 PM. On March 20th, we have a Wellness Committee meeting at 3:30 PM. The spring election is on April 2nd, so please get out and vote. And then on April 8th, we have a DEI Committee meeting at 5:00 PM, followed by a board meeting at 7:00 PM. And then, April 10th is actually our next, no, it is a board workshop at 5:00 PM. We only have one regular board meeting in March, so. We are moving into closed session this evening. So I am going to ask Barb Wench to read the motion to move us to closed session.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby moves to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, in this case, base wage negotiations. Roll call, vote.
All right. Barb has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris has seconded to move to closed session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I ask Barb to take the roll call vote.
Bridget Todd Robbins? Yes. Barb Wench, yes. Jennifer Deek?
Yes.
Khadijah Islam?
Yes.
Chris Lau?
Yes.
Lindsay Need?
Yes.